Okay, so we are recording and broadcasting and I will look to the audience. And Brian is there. Brian, I'm just making sure you're a panelist.
Andy, are you talking to me? Sorry.
No, sorry, I was talking to Brian, just trying to make sure he's promoted to a panelist. Okay, yeah, just take a second, we just got to roll call. So, yeah. So Brian should be with us now. Great. I'll defer to the chair.
Okay, this is the planning board meeting of first of October 2025. We have one, well, a couple of general business items tonight, but one, one fundamental item for review and discussion, which is an AR, A and R related to Zero South Pond Street. So we'll start with roll call. Brian Balcom.
Here.
Jen Bluestein is not here. Alden Clark.
Here.
Charlie Palmisano.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
Jack LeCarr.
Here.
And Matt Heffron.
Here.
And I am here. So we have six voting members related to the discussion tonight and, and our two associate members. I think we can move on to, to general business. Is, is there someone on representing the applicant?
Yeah, we have Blake Wilcox with us. Blake, I'm just gonna pull up before the A and R plan itself, perhaps maybe just a visual that we put in our staff report that illustrates the lot in question. It might, we thought that might be helpful. Did you want to speak to this briefly or I am more than happy to give a recap myself. What do you prefer?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like the way you put it more eloquently than I did.
Oh, yeah.
Recap and, you know, I'm gonna jump into Andy.
Okay, yeah. So just briefly, I'll give you just from the planning office. This is an unusual situation where we have what we call an approval not required plan at the town line. Basically, the lot itself is straddling two towns. So there's actually, if I'm not mistaken, Blake, you have another representative that gets Jeff at the Newbury Town Meeting.
Yes.
Sorry, planning board meetings very tonight days as well, also remote, dealing with the A and R endorsement on their side. Just because this, this plan is going to be recorded at the registry, but involves land in both communities. So typical of all A and R plans, except that this case it's straddling two community on the lot line, city line, I should say. In an unusual fashion, this is basically just, you know, taking a lot line and sort of merging this piece together. A sort of eliminating a line in between. And so that being the case requires an endorsement on both sides of the city line. And so, well, one person is representing in the town of Newbury, just coincidentally, the same night. Sorry, I'm just pulling up something else. The, the plan requires an endorsement here. What is the sole question really before the planning board is whether or not it constitutes a subdivision? And it does not because it is not creating a sort of landlocked piece that needs to have a new roadway to get to it. In this case, the frontage is already there. It's effectively just removing a line that's on the, the plan there. So what I'm going to show you here is just the black and white drawing of that. And if now that you've sort of seen the aerial photograph, if you sort of looked diagonally a little bit, you can kind of orient yourself here and see the lot in question here like this. And what we have is this lot line here is being eliminated. So a typical of some of the A and R plans, we see the lands being merged together. And so, so this land is being, you know, merged together and that is going to go to the registry of deeds for recording, but doesn't require a subdivision where a new roadway needs to be put in to access that. As I understand it, there's going to be a house built in the town of Newbury. And I believe coordination has happened or is underway with public services in the typical fashion for utilities and anything related to those other things are all kind of, you know, typical run of the mill. So again, the Office of Planning and Development in summary just recommends endorsement in the usual fashion because it doesn't constitute a subdivision, which is that primary question before the board. If you have any other detailed questions, either for me, you know, or in this case, Blake, the applicant, we'll leave it to you all as board members. And Blake, did I miss anything? Do you want to add anything on that?
Nope. The only thing is we, I did update and submit a new plan earlier on. Oh, the only thing different and it's not, it's, it's fine for now, Andy, is that we
Yeah.
There you go.
Sorry, there. Yep, there is. Yep.
So we, we already have approval from all the DPW requirements, water sewer curb cuts are pre-existing. We actually have a building permit in Newbury for this project already. This is more of a formality because we're, we're consolidating these two lots and eliminating a historic lot line in Newbury. Newbury didn't want us to go to Newbury Port right there exactly. Frankly, more as a courtesy and the other reason why we're doing this is because the address is in Newbury Port. The address is going to be six South Pond Street, and this is very important because I do this for a life safety. As you guys know, I do a lot of work in Newbury Port and one of the things that I could be ahead of is what is the address going to be later on? And one of the things here is that it's going to be six South Pond Street. So to get this to propagate through all of, all of the services, nine, one, one, fire and police. If we have Newbury Port's endorsement, it helps to push everything through to the assessor and the registry as well.
Just out of curiosity, Blake, where's the water sewer coming through or is it?
South Pond. Yep. Good question. Yep. So South Pond. Yeah. So we had a meeting probably three months ago, Charlie, with Water Sewer. Walked it through, actually went out, met him in the street, looked at the manhole. Had the, had the meeting, got the, got the full approval from them for Water Sewer tap at the, at the street.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
So Andy, just a, just a question, I guess, since the, the lot line that's being eliminated is totally in Newbury. Is that correct? It's just that one line?
Yep.
So. But it involves land.
Involves.
Right.
Yeah, it involves land in the city of Newbury Port, so.
Right. So we're just, I mean, essentially we're just being asked to approve merging the, the, the land in Newbury Port with the lot in Newbury.
Yeah, although I would say just sort of in terms of precise, you know, sort of legalese. It's sort of in essence, the primary thing you're, by doing so, what you're saying is it does not constitute a subdivision that requires the building of a roadway to get to. You know, it's sort of a, you know, the landlocked piece. In this case, it has that frontage that's not changing that condition, you know, in any way, shape or form. It's just getting rid of that lot line and that we see on a routine basis. The other thing you often see, probably on a much more frequent basis is where people are adjusting a lot line to deal with the fact that they had a fence that straddled the lot line and, you know, they didn't want to, you know, somebody wanted to buy the fence line or, you know, not have to move something. And so we oftentimes will see an A and R plan where someone's just shifting, you know, not doing anything but changing the, you know, frontage or access to these lots, but in fact, just zigzagging a line a little bit differently to deal with some sort of improvements that were done historically, but, you know, didn't follow the lot lines for some reason. And the two owners are working those things out. In this case, it's something we see a little bit less frequently, I'd say, but like just eliminating or merging a lot in this fashion.
And these are the same, Blake, you own both of these parcels, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So there's some weird archaic, archaic law that when you do that, you merge the properties, the doctrine of merger and it, and you aren't able to actually subdivide it after that anyhow.
For purposes of zoning, yeah, you're, it's, there's a merger when you need it for compliance with zoning.
Question, do I see it's number four, South Pond Street on that lot?
Uh, sorry, we, oh, this piece right, right in here?
On the plan?
I see five, uh, this might, I'm not sure this was, yeah, six south pond, is that what you referred to?
That's the lot next door is four.
Yeah, the lot next door is for, correct.
I see.
South Pond Street. And that's why we're doing this again, to, to get the address recorded as six South Pond, because right now it's zero. And we don't want the address to be five R High Road in Newbury because from a life safety standpoint, that's a, that's a bad way to go. So yeah, so that, that, that's another reason why we're going to properly record this so that the address propagates through as six South Pond Street.
I, I got it.
So when, when this property line is, is eliminated, this, this parcel will extend from Pond Street all the way to High Road?
Nope, right there where Andy's cursor is, it stops right there.
Okay.
The property line of five R.
Sorry, not reading it very well. Okay. Thank you.
Any questions for either one of us?
What, what happens to the parcel then that, that runs out to High Road?
That's, that's five High Road.
And is, you, you own that as well?
We do.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Just curious. And Andy, there's no, there's no issue with frontage dimension or anything on, on South Pond Street?
It's not changing any of those conditions in the city of Newbury Port. It's just eliminating a lot line in the town of Newbury. It's just that because it involves land in both communities, I think, you know, we just wanted to make sure the registry is not going to have a problem because they have to have that determination from both communities, you know, for, in, in this case, it's, uh, there's an, we don't often see this where something like this is straddling the city or town line, but but we're here, we're here, it's involving land in both communities. The registry, you know, is looking and saying, do we have the endorsement of the relevant planning board? And so here they'd have it from both boards accordingly.
Okay. Any other questions from the board?
No, not for me.
No.
Yep.
I will entertain a motion then related to endorsement of the A and R.
Make a motion to endorse A and R presented.
A second.
We'll do this as a, a roll call. Brian Balcom.
Yes.
Alden Clark.
Yes.
Charlie Palmisano.
Yes.
Jamie Pennington.
Yes.
Rick Tainter.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. So the board endorses the A and R as proposed.
Thank you. And Blake, will you be in terms of the Mylar?
Yes.
That's what we see tomorrow or the next day?
I will be by tomorrow, right early.
Okay, I'll, I think it should be no problem for us to do it right away in the morning then. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Blake.
Good night. Bye bye.
Um, I believe Chair, we're carrying the minutes to the next meeting and that's actually partly Meyer. I think that Caitlin didn't get from me a couple of the recordings that normally I copy her on the recordings and for some reason I had noticed that she had not been copied on a few, so I think that might be part of the delay there.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen any, any of these minutes yet to, to take a look at, but I'm.
Yeah.
Andy, I received the recording, so thank you. I'll have those out to you soon. I just did not do the minutes for eight twenty because I was not at the meeting.
Oh, yeah, apologies. Yeah, we're following up. Apologies. Yeah, eight twenty, we're following up with Rachel Cusick who does another board and was doing these particular minutes. For some reason, we, Diane, another Diane, right, or back on that. So that should also be on your next agenda and we should not have any problem having that on there as well.
Okay. Um, hey, we can move on to other updates then.
Yeah, um, I guess the main thing was just sort of, some of you might be curious. The planning board had issued a letter to the zoning board of appeals for the Kmart Plaza Landings redevelopment project. And just some of you might be interested in sort of what's happened or what's transpired since then. So I think I forwarded on to the board, the response letter. They've, the applicant has submitted a number of response letters to peer reviews and things like that. In this case, a letter, a response to comments that were made by the planning board. So some of you might be interested, if you've already read that letter and we've got the context of that, there was another letter about mitigation that, you know, the way that mitigation can or cannot be applied. There's sort of a legal analysis of that on behalf of the applicant. And perhaps more substantively, what the zoning board got last night was a slightly revised plan. The notable thing, since some of you, I think, are already familiar with it and we don't need to make a sort of a lengthy thing out of it, is just that primarily, I guess, I'll show you another graphic in a moment, but down here, there's some improvements I'll show with the different graphic they've proposed. And these are recent changes meant to address some of the traffic concerns that were raised by the consultant, some of the comments were raised by the planning board and a few others. It may not provide, respond to every comment or every concern or respond to everybody's, you know, particular preferences. But there were some things that were responsive and so they are showing those. There might be other things that you, either you or others, you know, still thinking are needed, including the ZBA members. But there is, there's some improvements down there. More importantly in here, there are a couple of adjustments to things like islands. So there's a closing of this to have more clarity in this area here. They, they sort of adjusted, this is a pass through here for vehicles. And then over here, more notably, I guess, over here, they had put some parking, you know, nose in facing the building here. This is a little bit wider of a walkway here. And these spaces here are facing the building. The driveway is here shifted over with islands sort of capping the end here. So this is treated, I think, a little bit better than before. You know, it is for several different ways. There are some sidewalk or crosswalk shortenings that were done like here. And there is some continued discussion about the nature of other sort of sidewalk connectivity or walkway connectivity throughout the larger Plaza Landings. And the extent to which this project will, you know, have some of those other improvements around or connecting this, these new housing units to commercial uses and whatnot. But that is largely, this area here, I'd say for the most part, this is sort of largely what we saw as more recent changes to the plan itself. And then there was also some improvements down on Low Street that were proposed most recently. And so here, what we're seeing is that's the main drive there, the Kmart building today, new building going in there. And so I'm just going to blow up this area here. What it is, is they had suggested essentially some, some lane width slightly narrowing a bit, which is part of the discussion, I'll mention in a moment. But putting in some improvements that are good for the pedestrian, but then there's some discussion about bike lanes that I'll mention in a moment. They did propose to put a left lane, turning lane in here. So as you're coming down Low Street from Story Ave, you'd be able to turn left. It's not a controlled or signalized intersection they're proposing. There is a proposal now for the RRFB, Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon. The kind of thing that we refer to when we say the Merson sign, the one we're familiar with down there. And so that type of sign there, they also had noted that they were willing to upgrade that, quote unquote, or so to speak, to the RRFB. Which sort of the, or sorry, the, the sort of Hawk style signal that we have down at the Route One Traffic Circle, the recent one that MassDOT put in to connect the bike path through there. That is the Hawk signal style. And so that has a full control stop sign for folks as opposed to the flashing that happens when a, only when a pedestrian is crossing. In this case, it brings everybody to a full stop. But there was further discussion from there, although I think it's sort of acknowledged that these are improvements for the pedestrian. I don't think most people would dispute that. There were some questions about things like, well, what does that mean for the width of, say, you know, trying to either have or, or, you know, or fit a bike lane? Whether you call it a bike lane or shoulder, there was some concern about the reduction from six feet down tapering into two. You know, sharing the lane essentially with the vehicles because of the need to, you know, have this curb to curb and so forth. So that might be looked at a little further. I don't know what will happen, you know, in that area, but these are the types of improvements that were most recently proposed there to deal with some of the pedestrian crossing and safety as well as some of the turning movements, you know, there. So, there, sorry, I should note also, just finally, there were also some discussion points about the garage entrances and exits and the extent to which people would be sort of forced to go, you know, in one and out the other, that sort of thing. And so there was some discussion here because of the vehicles going out this way and, and turning left. And maybe, you know, starting to have some queuing issues here for folks. There was some discussion about having this be sort of a one-way in only with a right turn out only, you know, coming this way possibly. And that's sort of some discussion right now is whether that be the case. But a right turn only, so folks could at least go this way. The concern from some is of course is that folks won't abide by that and might, you know, you know, still end up going this way, causing some congestion. And so there was discussion about, you know, a camera system or enforcement, you know, internally, you know, from sort of the operator versus, you know, from a practical sense, how that might be done. But generally speaking, there was some discussion about the flow here and whether residents might be required to go one way or another, where, you know, just to kind of disperse the traffic or have extra queuing on Low Street. So with that, I'll stop and leave if you have any questions from, from where things are now.
And can we go back to the the perpendicular parking that's on the north side?
Yeah.
The proposed? I, I don't know. I I've never thought that, that that was the safest configuration. Backing out into two-way circulation, which may eventually become one of the, the streets in this expanded district. They've added an awful lot of parking here too.
Yeah, I agree. It's not the ideal end result that one would want. I think it might be in some ways an improvement over the prior plan that the board had seen, but I also agree with some of what you're talking about here. And I think that's.
An improvement because there's definition of that street to a certain extent. They've moved the accessible parking spaces to a point adjacent to the building, but all of this perpendicular parking just
Yeah.
That's, that's not a great configuration.
Yeah, maybe that there's some concern. And again, it's, it's no problem from my end. I'm, I'm not defending it, but there's some concern about loss of parking or, you know, sort of encroachment of this project and the parking and the improvements further into the plaza. That to me isn't an issue because those are worthwhile improvements. And I think most people could sort of agree, there's a surplus of parking around there that could be benefited by, you know, further walkways, plantings, things like that. But that you see sort of the line being drawn here of the extent to which the improvements are. So there's sort of an agreement to do some further improvements here, but to your point, not necessarily this sort of fully proper streetscape improvement that we might all want for, for different things. Like for instance, there's no walkway on the other side of that. It's not a street line.
I mean, I would, I would think, you know, as looking, looking forward to the, you know, the broader development of this district. If, if this did in fact become a street. Quote, street. I, I would not necessarily be in favor of, of all of those cuts and connections into the larger parking lot. Because, I mean, there, maybe there's going to be a building built, you know, on, on the other side of the street there, you know, one-story retail building or, or something. You know, and I would think that that parking lot might get reconfigured in a way that it yet circulated within itself. And you weren't creating all of these cuts and connections out onto that street, but that maybe that's a future discussion. But I, I, when we first started talking about this, and I think Rick, Rick had some points to make relative to this. I, I guess I imagined this being parallel parking. And, and a kind of limited amount of parallel parking. And now there's just all of this perpendicular parking and what feels like an extension of the retail parking lot. That, that's, it's next to the building. So I'm not, it's, it's probably an improvement over what was there, but I'm not sure it's getting to, to where I would like it to be.
Yeah. And that's, I guess, partly what I was trying to say a moment ago to your, to your point there is just that, you know, to do the type of improvements properly that one might want, one might other than want sort of less parking in this area, so to speak, or you know, the, the space, you know, here, sort of just outside this boundary that's been drawn right around here. That, you know, originally, by the way, the, the project site, so to speak, was drawn sort of like this right around the building and then sort of drawn to sort of bound this. But when we, you know, we might have the argument here that, well, to do it properly, you might need another space or two, you know, sort of along here to make this properly work as a street, right? And I would, that's sort of worthwhile to do, you know, short term and long term, both for the housing and redevelopment here as well as long term to establish the street line you're talking about. Obviously, this is as far as the ZBA has gotten with the applicant on that end of it, so to speak.
Yeah.
So Andy, the, the, I, I agree. I think that we had envisioned parallel parking.
Yeah.
Along the, the frontage there. And if you, if you zoom back to where you were before. You know.
This area, yeah.
Yeah. So if you turned those perpendicular spaces into parallel spaces, then you can shift those islands down and gain another ten or twelve spaces.
Pick up those.
You're not losing any spaces really by doing that. You're just.
Yeah.
You're keeping. And I think those islands, you know, they're, they're, they're cheap. They don't, they don't cost much. You can do them now. And if somebody wants to redevelop that lot in the future, you haven't really lost any money. So I, I think the best thing to do is to push for for parallel parking and, and then, you know, shifting that two-way street back toward the building by about the eight feet. To, to get that additional road parking. I had a question about the down, down by the entrance. What is that little bump out of parking spaces down by, by Low Street where they, where they've moved the lot line around there?
Uh, so you're talking about here?
Right there. Yeah. What's that for?
Uh, so they adjusted the, they basically created this island piece here in response to some of the traffic concerns in this area, sort of having some controls and not having movements this way. And so part of it was this sort of jog. It's a combination of TEC, the traffic consultant commenting, and then VAI, the Jeff Turk, the traffic consultant who's doing the design for the developer, coming back with a modification off of that idea, but basically to sort of force folks not to be doing this movement here, but to sort of push it away from there to allow queuing. And so it created this zigzag and it's a combination, sort of the designer, traffic designer and site designer for the developer. Took that TEC suggestion and sort of tweaked off of that. So it isn't the original sketch per se. But it created some additional spaces here while sort of closing this off. And, you know, it isn't creating sort of a sidewalk, you know, streetscape sort of thing per se, you know, in this corridor, the way that we, you know, we had talked either, but it is intended, I think, primarily to deal with the, allowing queuing space here and with, without the cars coming out here.
Okay. And the, the, the entrance can't, that entrance can't be moved further from Low Street. They've, they, that's their firm.
The garage?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, the board had asked that question. I don't know that I've seen, you know, sort of an engineering analysis of it, so to speak. But they have maintained that that's the way that it works for their project and they don't think they can make it work. I don't know how much they've delved into, you know, analysis or comparison of that, you know, with, you know, that the board hasn't had a lengthy discussion of the you know, details of that.
Seems like it's going to be a problem.
It's very close to the, and I was, you know, it's an obvious thing. It's very close there to this queuing. So.
People are going to take, if, if a car is waiting in their future left turn lane, waiting for a gap of oncoming traffic.
Yeah.
Boy, I was down there at quarter of five and it was crazy. But the, they could be zooming into that driveway and running to a car very easily.
Yeah, somebody had asked if, you know, could they put it like in a, a sort of a triangular, one of those curved islands here, you know, sort of forced, quote unquote, folks to take a right here and out. I mean, we've all seen Chipotle and, you know, the people aren't gonna necessarily abide by that, you know, that's Massachusetts jurisdiction up there, but but the way that it's configured and just notwithstanding any signs or attempts, you know, people continue to take left turns up there that creates some issues with Noble Street. So the, you know, there is some concern about this right here and that's still in dialogue.
Yeah. If we can just go, go down to the intersection, the, I would be really opposed to putting an RRFB in there. I think that would be tremendously future fatalities. I, I think that.
Yeah.
I, I think that a Hawk is better. You know, full signalization is obviously the best, but
Yeah.
I can't imagine an RRFB working there.
Yeah, that, there has been some, that has been, that's a concern expressed by one or two others. If, and I, again, I'm happy to convey all the, you know, any comments or concerns. You know, trying to get the applicant to make some adjustments as well as, you know, the board to know. But if you want to comment on that, you know, further or come to the meeting, that's something, you know, there was some dialogue about that where they essentially said our default now will be the RRFB. But, but if you want the Hawk, we'll, we're also willing, quote unquote, you know, to do that too. So.
No, I think it's ill-conceived as well, if anything. If, if they insist on it or has to happen, I would say go to the next side, was that the north side of the intersection? It seems like it would work better, just the way traffic flows down there.
But I would. Sorry, what, what would work? I'm sorry, maybe I didn't follow that.
Move it up to the left.
Go to the left. Go to the left, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Because of the way the traffic, the cars want to come into the.
Yeah.
Plaza. So.
Yeah.
The other, the other potential option maybe of, of you know, restricting the egress from the building, when you, when you say you want to perhaps suggest they don't go left, is maybe you could use some sort of barrier there in the middle of the, you know, the ingress and egress of the, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know how to describe it, but the left and right lanes there. Up about, I don't know, ten yards, maybe put a, a barrier right there where they actually can't go left.
Yeah, can't get through there to, right? Yeah, yeah. Yeah. And again, as long as the fire department get their access, there's other, there's ways of dealing, you know, this, this is a whole spectrum, of course, of perfection versus something that's sort of, you know, middle ground or does address a certain issues, but yeah.
It could just be like a bumper or something like.
Yeah. Yeah.
Andy, I have a question regarding the Hawk signal. At last week's meeting, they were saying that there was a requirement of twenty pedestrians per hour to, for a Hawk feasibility study. Have they basically asserted that they will provide that regardless of that study? That they've, they've agreed to?
Yeah, apologies. I don't remember the very specifics on that. Apologies, I don't, but, but I do recall that they were very clear. It seems that they were willing to put the Hawk in. It seems that they were willing to put the Hawk in, and they didn't see that their, their traffic consultant obviously would have not have said that was a possibility, I think, unless they, they felt that met, you know, thresholds, so to speak, you know, from a, you know, professional standard or best practices. I don't, I apologize, I don't remember the detail of that particular one, but they certainly felt confident enough that they were willing to offer that, and there certainly is some who would, you know, like Rick said, would prefer to see the Hawk, you know, there's a whole spectrum from full signalizing of the intersection, because obviously the Hawk, you know, even wouldn't address this directly, you know, with a control at that time, so.
Right.
So, um, I would, we did our bike audit of Low Street on September ninth. And while we were coming along this stretch of road where the, where the shoulder becomes narrow, there was a bus stopped taking over, blocking the entire shoulder. Is there going to be a bus stop there, do you know? Because.
Yeah, it's a great question.
Yeah.
Yeah, there was discussion briefly about this, and I think the applicant was sort of asked to go back and take a little further look at this. There was suggestion that, and partly from the traffic consultants, I recall, that they look into this further, talk with Miva and discuss, you know, how to make a proper amount of space there, eight foot width, you know, for, you know, for that, that depth that they might need and so forth. So they, they were asked to look a little further at that here with Miva and come back with something that seems more practical, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, I am, I, we've got almost, we have too much stuff being done in a small area, you know, trying to, trying to fit the bike lane in, trying to fit the bus stop in, try to, you know, make, make it safer for pedestrians. We may not need, if we have a Hawk signal, we probably don't need the Refuge Island. The Refuge Island is important if you have, if you only have an R F B, but if you have a Hawk,
Yeah.
we have the Hawk on State Street, and that, we don't have a Refuge Island there.
I mean, I still wouldn't find any harm necessarily in having the Refuge, but, um, but. Oh, no, sorry. Yeah, no, I, I understood. Yeah, and I can realize there's sort of pros and cons of different things. Sorry, I don't mean to, because I definitely want the bike lane space, too. But I'd also, it's also worth noting, I guess, and I don't, um, you know, speak for the traffic consultant, but our peer review consultant had suggested, as I understand it, sort of this concern that if we were going to go, if the board was going to have a discussion with the applicant about having the R F B, that if it was going to be upgraded to a Hawk, he would actually prefer or suggest, as I understand it, not going to the Hawk, but actually having a full signalization at that point, rather than having the Hawk, and part of that, I think, had to do with, you know, some queuing and so forth. But there was, there was a note there from him that if you're going to have that situation where there's a full control, given the queuing and whatnot, you may want to, as opposed to giving people the impression that this Hawk is, you know, fully controlling this intersection, including these movements, you know, that, that it might be better to have this further down away, so that it sort of stands on its own as a pedestrian crossing more clearly, I think, is what he was getting at, rather than sort of giving the impression it's a full control, you know, for everybody and the pedestrians, and then having somebody take a movement that isn't controlled by that, you know, stop, so.
Yeah, I guess, so.
But the width is definitely.
It's great, it's great to do something.
It's an issue.
We need to, we, we need to make sure that it's, because if, this can't be a sharer. It by far exceeds the, the volume and speed requirements for sharos. You can't put a sharer there. So in order to have any type of bicycle accommodation, you need to have a bike lane. And if the, so I think that the, a higher, a higher standard of signalization will give you, you might not need to take up so much real estate for the, for the Refuge Island. I think you need the Refuge Island if you have a, if you have an unsafe situation otherwise.
Yeah. Yeah, and you recognize here, at least this is right now, it doesn't look like these are being referenced as, um, on the development plans. These aren't being referenced as bike lanes just yet, right? They're being referenced as shoulders.
Right, they're not, they're not bike lanes, right, but they're places for bikes to be.
We'd like that. We'd like them, and we'd see the future of them being fully, you know, coherent bike lanes through. But here, they're not necessarily being acknowledged as future bike lanes in full.
Is there, is there, I thought the, um, I thought that the right of way was wider than that. The right of way is only six plus thirteen plus thirteen plus four?
I had thought that as well. Again, I'm going to defer to the engineering department, you know, D P S and the city engineer and so forth, you know, obviously. But I had thought that we would perhaps have some more space. You know, I still have a whole range of thoughts about this intersection sort of thing, you know, as well. But I, I had actually thought we would have a little bit more space to work with dimensionally and did not, you know, necessarily think that, you know, it might require some widening of pavement, maybe, but I had actually thought we might be able to fit the bike lanes with, you know, perhaps even with a refuge island in the middle without issue, but.
Well, we should, I mean, that would be something to look at on both sides, because
Yeah.
it's kind of scary out there right now.
Yeah. And it's, it's definitely, I think it was Bobby said earlier, but it's definitely, oh, it bothered quoted, I think, uh, it was Jared Collins, but it, it's definitely categorically, you know, a lot more pedestrians and of a different nature, given it's residential, and so it's going to generate a lot more pedestrians from that site.
Yep.
Definitely.
So we, we started sort of that discussion with the discussion of a, a bus turnout? And then, then we got into the crosswalk again and so forth, but isn't the current, the current bus stop is roughly where the crosswalk is coming, coming in? As, are we? Has there been any discussion?
I don't know if it, if there's going to be any shifting. I think that is, uh, still to be determined in discussion with Miva, I guess.
That's not a, that's not a formal bus stop, though. It's just a flag stop, isn't it?
Yeah, as I understand it, yeah.
Yeah, so there's no, there's no actual bus stop there. It's just where people say, I want to get out here, and so the bus stops.
Yeah, and I think the traffic consultant, they're doing the peer review, and suggests if you're going to have something there, you know, try to make sure that the, you know, the, the landing area, so to speak, you know, for ramp and accessibility and all that kind of stuff, you know, give it a width, you know, you know, be, looking at practically as opposed to just sort of a stub of the end of a sidewalk from this Hawk or R F B. And obviously, it doesn't, it doesn't connect directly. You know, we don't, we don't know, you know, until the future development plans here, it's a little hard to see how that connects directly and, you know, and so forth, but.
Has, has anyone determined that, given the new population here, that, that a bus stop, a formal bus stop would be necessary?
Um, again, that was, I think, part of the reason for having further discussion with Miva, um, you know, granted, that's a prediction for them, um, in some ways, but, um, but they do periodically adapt their routes. Sometimes their stop, you know, from, you know, formal stop locations, so for sure, um, that's, that's partly something that may be modified here. I don't know just yet, because I haven't had that discussion since the meeting. I don't know, um, when and how they think these stops or places should be adjusted. I'd have to give deference to them, because I don't know, you know, the type of rider ships and data and so forth. Rick might actually know better on that front than I do, because he's had some more discussion with M V P C, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just to note, it is marked as a bus stop on Google Maps.
It is a formal, but as a, not just a flag stop, yeah.
But it, it may be, but I'm not sure it is. You know, I think it may be, I think it may be a, um, you know, how Miva has these, they tell in their schedule when a bus is going to be somewhere.
Right.
And so Google Maps may have interpreted that as a bus stop. But I don't think, I don't think there's actually any bus stop in Newburyport other than the one by the library. I think that's the only formal bus stop that we have.
Or by the new parking garage, is that one, or?
Well, that may be one, too.
That should be. It certainly should be after all that.
But as we, we were talking about, you know, a number of years ago, trying to, trying to talk about places where bus stops could be located, and I, I think the, those two downtown may be the only ones. The other ones are just timed locations, I think.
One thing that, uh, in addition to, you know, some of the comments you guys have made thus far, that you could, um, you know, Caitlin and I, we can follow up with, uh, I know Rick will probably do some of those, too, but we can follow up with, obviously, M V P C, we work with on a regular basis, but we can follow up with Miva and just, so we're having also a little bit of a direct dialogue about what they're thinking in this area, both short term with this and long term for the area, um, as best they can, just because obviously that's part of the dialogue, that the applicants, um, they have to look into a little further and come back with something to address that part of it. And, you know, you've discussed it here. It's obviously something we want to make sure transit is, um, as convenient and safe as possible, so.
So what's, what's the next step with this? Where, what is the Z B A?
Yeah, sorry, great question. Um, so October twenty-eighth is the next meeting, uh, that they're going to have on it. And then from there, I think our expectation is, I believe it's November twelfth, uh, it's a Wednesday, I think. November twelfth is a special meeting date that the Z B A has set, just to allow a little bit more time to focus on this project, so I think that'll be the, um, the primary hearing that night. And then there's probably, you know, one or two more meetings before the, um, at least the current deadline for making a decision in, uh, December twenty-first, I think it is. And so, uh, right now, it's the twenty-eighth. They'll talk about traffic and parking at that meeting again. They'll talk about civil and stormwater again, a few things still unresolved in that, excuse me, in that peer review area. Some of which overlap on some of the civil, uh, or site, you know, design, parking, traffic stuff overlaps with your comments, of course. So the twenty-eighth might be of interest to you if you want to listen in or track that, and then after that, we'll see where they go with topics, but they will also, on the twenty-eighth, be talking about the, um, sort of design peer review piece of it, so. And, you know, it might seem obvious to us, but, um, the designer view isn't obviously only just, you know, questions about the building itself. It's, you know, um, what is, you know, how does a site relate to it? Because that's just equally important, so. So we'll, we'll see whatever comments the designer, um, you know, David Campbell and his team has, you know, to sort of peer review the set of plans that are proposed for both the building and the site at this point. They, um, we pushed off to them, so they have the more recent tweaks that have been adjusted here, and they did actually, uh, he attended the Z B A meeting last night, so, which is good, because he's full up to speed now on some of these, uh, discussions that overlap.
And what did you say the deadline was? December what?
Uh, twenty-first, I believe is the date. Uh, that's the date to close the hearing, not to issue the written decision.
Okay.
A little bit more time after that to issue the written decision, so there might be some further deliberation. Again, there could be a statutory or a agreed upon extension with the applicant to the statutory deadline as well. Um, that sometimes happens, but, um, but they'd also have forty days after that to issue a written decision, so they may have a few more meetings after that, which they're deliberating over, you know, permit conditions or mitigation or things like that, if there's anything that's, uh, still open at that point.
Andy, can you go back to the broader site plan that you showed? Just, I, I, I'm just thinking about the points we made in our letter and, you know, what we're looking at here is in terms of the revised plan and the other, the other obvious thing that jumps out is in terms of the, the character of the public realm and the sidewalks and, and the idea of street trees, et cetera. This, this is still kind of the suburban landscaping solution with landscaping against the building. And, you know, that, that, they, they haven't done anything about street trees anywhere other than on the, the low street frontage. So we, we tried to make a point relative to that as well, and, you know, there's, there's, I mean, it's not, I suppose at some point you could make that change as, as the district evolves, but they haven't really acknowledged that in terms of sidewalk dimensions or location of landscaping, et cetera. So, so I guess I'm wondering fundamentally, is, is there a mechanism where we forward follow-up comments related to, for example, the parallel parking related to the intersection?
Yeah, I, I think, um, but leave it to you all. I mean, one thing you could do is, you know, for instance, the comments that were mentioned tonight, for instance, it could be this, that, um, you know, you could, similarly to last, I'll leave it to you all, but just typical fashion, you might just, for efficiency of timeframe, either, you know, possibly a future meeting, but to keep, get things going to the Z B A for their consideration and to, so that the applicant can see the comments and try to be, quote unquote, responsive to them. You could say, uh, you know, submit another letter of comment. It could be just another brief bullet list of some of these things that you talked about, you know, here. Um, and that could be sent on to them so that they also have that for consideration as they go into their next discussion. They could consider, you know, the, the parallel parking, um, you know, the, the shift of that, um, any other, the, the topics that we talked about here. If there's any other particulars, if you want to authorize the chair to, to do that, that just, you know, makes it clear as a body that, you know, you can communicate that. Otherwise, you could wait till a future meeting. It's just a question of when those comments are then transmitted and how long it is to take into account, so.
Okay. Well, I'd be, I'd be willing to try to put, you know, a short response together. I'm, I would need some help related to all of the discussion related to the intersection and, and the signalization down there. But I'd, I'd be willing to try to help organize.
If, Rick, if you don't mind, maybe you and I can, um, uh, offer a little bit in terms of that intersection component. And then, um, I, I don't know if, just because, not to sort of volunteer for you, but it sounds like you and I, uh, might be able to speak to those, those pieces a little bit more based on our involvement or understanding. Sorry, Rick, you're muted. I don't know if you're with us. You're muted.
I'm sorry. Sure. I was saying, I said sure three times, not realizing.
Okay, sorry. I, I figured you'd say sure, but yeah, um, sorry.
I was getting nervous. I thought one of, one of us are going to have to be chosen.
The point where Rick wouldn't do a planning task or, or, you know, comment doesn't.
I was like, oh, my God. It has to be Jamie.
That can't be, yeah. So, yeah, I, that, Bob, we could work with that, and the rest of the comments may be a little bit more easy to, uh, describe from the discussion.
Yeah, I, I don't think it needs to be a lengthy response.
Agreed, I, yeah, it doesn't have to be like.
I think the comment about the parking is really worth forwarding to them.
Yeah. Just so you all know, in terms of commenting, if you wanted to, for the landscaping, just to be clear, my understanding is the last discussion, um, they, they were saying essentially they want to try to preserve these trees here. I don't know, um, there was some concern raised about, of course, with, you know, the work involved in that area in close proximity, the grading and so forth, so it's not a hundred percent clear, um, you know, how that will, will pan out there, but they are right now showing or, um, suggesting the preservation of the trees that are there along that, uh, frontage now, so. Anyway, um, so leave it to you as far as any comments you want to do. Um, obviously, we'll, we'll be trying to convey and, and work out issues as best we can, including the stuff you've mentioned, so.
What's, um, you said the next meeting is the twenty-eighth?
The twenty-eighth of October, um, and so you could get, I, you know, I would suggest no later than the comments themselves coming in no later than a week before the meeting. However, um, the preference is obviously, quote unquote, as early as possible, because then not only the board, but also it might give the applicant, given the statutory timeframe for the board to make a decision. It gives the applicant more time to be responsive to those comments before the board, you know, has to make a decision. So we're in October twenty-eighth is the next Z B A meeting. They're going to have it discussed. You do have a meeting on the fifteenth. You could comment then, um, you know, and then, uh, you know, look at your letter then, or you could authorize Bob now, whatever you prefer, or you could wait until after that meeting on the twenty-eighth. You just, it's just closer to when they're more likely to make a decision.
No, I, given, given the previous comments about the timeliness of our input, uh, I think sooner the better on this. So why, why don't I circle back with you on that, Andy, and we'll try to figure, maybe, maybe we can get a final draft together that could be reviewed by the planning board on the fifteenth, and then we can get it out like the next day.
Work for everybody else?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, sounds good.
Okay. Any, any other updates, Andy?
Um, not at the moment, no. Um, again, I think, you know, you might find that, that discussion on the twenty-eighth, you know, particularly of interest, obviously, given the, you know, the over, that, that'll be a key meeting, I think, here, given the timeframe and the focus, you know, several overlaid things that night, uh, but.
Okay. I guess I'll entertain a moment, a motion to adjourn, then.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, take a roll call, Brian Belkin.
Yes.
Alden Clark.
Yes.
Charlie Pomusano.
Yes.
Jamie Pennington.
Yes.
Rick Tinter.
Yes.
Jack LeCarr.
Yes.
Matt Heffron.
Yes.
And I'm also a yes. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
All right, guys. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thanks, Andy.
See you.
Thank you.